I expect all expected members are here. There's one missing. Anyway, good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of North and East Plans Panel. My name is councillor Akter and I will be chairing today's meeting. Could I remind everyone that today's meeting has been live streamed on Leeds City Council YouTube channel so that the public can observe them in it without needing to be present? Could I also remind members of the public present, which nobody's here? North and East Plans Panel deals with applications from the north and east of the city. The aim of the panel is to hear all the relevant information from applicants, members of the public and council offices to help members of the panel to make their decision. Could I now invite members and officers to introduce themselves? And once you have done, please mute your microphone. Let's start from the left.
Jessica Thomas, Principal Planner with the East team.
Good afternoon, I'm Lisa Branna, Principal Engineer, Highways.
Afternoon councillor Nicole Lloyd from Temple Mews and Ward.
Good afternoon councillor Bromley, Horst Thon Rorden.
Good afternoon councillor David Jenkins from Killenbeck and Seacroft Ward.
Good afternoon councillor Adel Ray from Bramley and Stanley Ward.
Hi there Hannah Bethall, councillor in Kirkstal.
Councillor Simon Sury from the Putty Ward.
Councillor Sam Firth from the Herewood Ward.
Hi everyone, Natasha Prosser Clark to the panel.
Good afternoon, Philippa Pluntree Varley, Principal Legal Officer, team leader for development and advisor to the panel this afternoon.
Good afternoon, Jonathan Carr, Head of Development Management and Lead Officer at today's panel.
Right, thank you, everyone. Moving on to our agenda, could I ask the clerk to go through item one to five, please?
Thanks Chair, Agenda item one, there's no appeals. Agenda item two, no exempt information. Agenda item three, no formal late items. Agenda item four, members to disclose any interests at this point. Agenda item five, apologies from councillor Stevenson and councillor Firth is here in attendance as a substitute.
Thank you. Item six, minutes of the previous meeting held on 30th of January 2025. Do members accept these minutes as correct record? I'll assume correct unless indicated otherwise. Item seven, could I ask the officers to present, please?
Certainly. Thank you Chair. And so, members, we're here today with a position statement relating to Mount St Mary's Catholic School for a new school building. The reason we bring this as a position statement is that there are a couple of issues that are still outstanding and there's some fairly significant, in a kind of policy terms matters, that we'd really like to get some steer on as we sort of progress the application forward. So, this is the application site. And members who've read the report will know that the site used to be linked to this area on the north here, which is Mount St Mary's convent and presbytery. The school building, the main school building is this building here, which is the old convent building, which is now roofed over. And when we're talking about the demolition section, it's this building here, which will be demolished to reveal the frontage of the convents here. And the new building, which we'll see in a second on the slide, is going into this area here. The green spaces that are referred to in the report, this section on the kind of north of the site with the playing pitch and this additional land here, is protected and allocated green space. And there's this section here, which is a sort of informal playing pitch for the school, which will also be lost. So, this is the proposal. You can see that those buildings that are on the Elaby Road frontage have now come down and with the school building now revealed behind. And the new building, the replacement building, is into that area of green space on the side of the pitch and the car park replaces the old school playing field. And flipping back a second, the existing school car park then becomes open space as well. Just taking through some photographs, this is the building that's going to come down, very much an of its time structure, concrete and panel rendered. And the concrete has now failed, it's part of the rafters school buildings where they're simply beyond their sort of tenable life. This shot is just looking down Elaby Road, so it's a bit of 180 from where we were. This is St Xavier's Church, which I'll talk about a little bit more in some detail. And this is the school site on the left hand side and the building is going in behind these trees. And you'd also seen in the report, there's sort of reference to informal parking along Elaby Road, which is these cars here. And the new access point is roughly coming in sort of opposite the church here. This is a broader shot back, again, you've got St Xavier's on the left here and the building will be on this elevated land within some of this enclosed playing pitch area. And this is looking west and the building will be sitting here. This is the existing sports hall building of the school. Just some quick elevations and some floor plans. As I say, it's flat roof, three storey building, constructed all buff brick. That was the back of the building, this is the front of the building with a sort of canopy just to define the main entrance to the building. And then it's very much as you'd expect for a school building, central corridor, we've got dining facilities on the ground floor and then working up, you've got classrooms off that central corridor. This just gives a sense of some of the level changes that are on site with some of the higher ground on the left, church here on the lower ground. So that just gives a sense that the building is sitting up above the listed building that's just off site. That's the school building with the main convent building behind it. And then this will be the kind of main Elaby Road street scene frontage. So on the left, you've got where the buildings have come down, revealing the listed building of the convents behind, sports hall to the front of the site and a new building behind. And St Xavier's Church sits just off to the right. Members will see from the report that there's some concern still remaining on some of the frontage trees and the loss of the trees. There's a tree referred to in the report, which has ecological benefits, which is this tree here, number 51. We're still working through with the applicants whether or not that will be retained on site. And just a few visuals to finish up the presentation. So, this is how the new Elaby Road frontage will look with the old school buildings demolished here, new landscaping put in and the convent building revealed behind. And then just a couple of visuals of the building itself in situ. From the report, members will be aware that the two critical issues from a policy perspective is the loss of the playing pitch and the impact on St Xavier's Church, which is the off-site listed building. Just to say that the Historic England, their objection letter refers to less than substantial and less than substantial harm, I should say. And just to clarify for members, that doesn't mean there's no harm to the listed building or it's a limited harm, it's just that in policy terms, there is either substantial harm or less than substantial harm. And within the less than substantial harm category, it can go from very little to quite a bit. So when it says less than substantial, that doesn't mean it's an insignificant harm, it just means it's not substantial. And if we are looking to move forward towards a positive recommendation, we'd still need to find public benefits to outweigh the less than substantial harm. In terms of highways, we are still trying to work out some of the highway implications. And Lisa, I'm hoping you'll be able to pick some of this detail up for me. But with the access, new access coming onto Elaby Road here and the frontage parking that's there, we do need to resolve the issue of off-site parking, which does appear to be related to the school because the parking disappears outside of term time. And you'll see from the report that the parking on site is not quite sufficient in terms of the ratio of sort of staff and spaces being provided. So, we are still trying to work through how many spaces are needed on sites and what the implications are. One key update for members is that we have received an objection from the local ward members who are very concerned to see access retained to the sports pitch on the north side of the site. There is a community use agreement in place and we would look to carry that forward by condition. And the other concern for members is the sort of off-site junction of Elaby Road and Elaby Lane. Unfortunately, I don't think I've got a slide that clearly shows that. But the road narrows to a single track, which we actually see quite well on this shot. And so ideally, I think we'd like to see that junction opened up to two-way at the junction rather than a single way at the junction. And that's one of the things that ward members are quite keen to see, just to improve the kind of general highway safety, particularly with the fact that school, like the children from the school, the bus stops are on Elaby Lane, so there's quite a bit of foot traffic along those sides as well. I'm sure Chair will work us through the questions sequentially and that's it for me. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. We have a Dale Greencombe agent in attendance, but only to answer members' questions should you, should they arise. Do a member have any questions to officers?
Thank you. Is it worth me doing them all at once? Yeah? Yes, indeed. Do we have, and this might, this might fall to the agents, so let me know which ones I need to hold back and I'll highlight them. Do we know what the staff ratios are? We know that anecdotally in secondary schools, it tends to be teaching staff that will drive and come from further afield and support staff, lunch staff etc will be there, often walking from the locality. So it would be important to know which volumes of those different staff there are because that will affect the need for parking. In terms of the report, it talks about the ratio being 70 something to then 95 spaces. So I'd be interested to know whether we know how many cars are using that informal space and whether it would fall within that extra approximately 20 spaces. And if so, whether there's been any suggestion of removing that informal parking, double yellowing it and making that the two-way element. In terms of the, and I think this probably is more for the agent, I didn't see anything in the report, in fact, the only reference to it was that we, as an authority, don't know what the actual public benefit is of that building changing. So I'd want some information on what additionality they're getting, is it new labs, is it that makes that educationally better? I guess there's a, I don't know what this is like in policy around the difference between our acceptance of green space as recreational green space versus specific pitches. Because losing a pitch but having a better equipped green space for those young people who don't want to play on a pitch and actually find pitches quite scary because people kick balls in their face, isn't necessarily a bad thing. And also, it would be good to know whether there's been any discussion around how the school will manage PE lessons, teamwork in order to, if they get rid of that pitch. I'll let someone else have a go and then I'll probably come back in. Thanks.
Okay, so, taking them in order, I'm hoping. In terms of the kind of fine, more granular details of the staff, I certainly don't have that information to hand and my suspicion is that the agent won't either. But that does slightly tie into our lingering concern about the travel plan. Because that's the kind of detail that we'd expect to work through in terms of a travel plan, so that we could understand how many staff are travelling by car, how many by public transport, how many by cycle and the ratio, you know, the number of pupils who are cycling as well and therefore the infrastructure on the site that's needed to support cycling. So, again, I mean, from a purely officer perspective, I'd be happy with that information upfront, typically because we're not sure, as the report says, you know, are we going to need extra buildings on site to accommodate things like extra cycle spaces? Now, the agents are quite keen to see that conditioned, considering that it is a matter that can be dealt with, it's not going to fundamentally stop this application. So, we don't necessarily need to know all the information upfront, so can we deal with it by condition? So again, that's one of the things that we potentially quite like a steer on, really. So I think in some ways, that first question, not sure. And that, that is a question mark about the application. In terms of the kind of off-site parking, there's a real balance to be struck here. And it's one of the things which is quite clear from the Historic England comments, is that they really want to see the kind of tree bank, most of it which sits outside the red line along this kind of frontage retained, because that really helps to kind of provide a visual buffer between this elevated three-storey building and this grade one listed structure on this side. So, I'm, we do need to deal with the parking, I think that's quite clear. But I, we don't, wouldn't want to see it really returned into kind of very formal engineered highway. I think that view from highways officers, again, Lisa, sorry, I'm about to speak here, is that we probably want to see it returned to kind of grass verge with maybe it's optimal knee rail, just to prevent the parking occurring again. So, it's more that the junction, Elaby Lane runs sort of here-ish on the other side of the playing pitch and so the junction's sort of literally just off the bottom of the screen here. It's this narrowed section here at the junction that's of most concern to us, rather than the kind of road itself. And then in terms of the benefits, I mean, I think the, the key point is that the structure on site is failing and will fail. You know, and members will be well aware of all the press reports about failing concrete and dangerous school buildings etc. And I, we've certainly got a structural survey that says, yes, this building is beyond its, on its, on its life. We, I, we have since the report, it was written, been provided with essentially the options appraisal that was done by the Department for Education about where the school building was going to go. And I think because the site is so constrained, it's always going to be a case of finding the least worst option in a way. So, it was considered putting the building on the existing staff car park. But then there were issues with, well, the school can't lose the building before the new building's built because the classroom provision still has to be there, it's a like for like kind of replacement with obviously upgraded facilities. So, what do we do with the staff car parking in the meantime? It was potentially being put on this areas like the basketball courts at the back of the sports hall, but again, we're still losing sports provision. Then actually, it's quite close to the new housing that's going within Mount St Mary's. It was potentially going to be further forward in the site, but again, the impact on the listed building was then greater. So although this isn't a particularly wonderful location in terms of many of the policy conflicts, it is ultimately, I think, probably the best we can get on the site, yes, on the site itself. So the benefit is basically creating a safe building with a replacement facilities in the least worst location we can find on the site as it is. And I am not sure about PE for this school at all. I can certainly find out the information and my guess is it's one the agent can't answer either, but by all means, yeah, the agent's here. As I said, do you want Lisa to come in on any of the kind of highway points?
So, the, the sort of fly park and whatever, external to the school, it looks to be, you know, between 30 and 40 vehicles at times when you look on aerial view on Google etc. What we're not clear about is sort of how much, you know, is potential, you know, there's definitely some, is some, I would say the majority of that is definitely related to the school. But some of it might be used by the church, you know, on a Sunday for instance, but, but so, we have asked for more information about the parking from, you know, from applicants. But however, because of the new, proposed new access for the school, some of that parking sits within the visibility display of the new access, so that would need to come out anyway. Also, the arrangement on Elaby Road, which is like got two giveaways and then a single carriageway with, for part of it, with sort of part of giveaways at either end. Because that has to be moved to accommodate the new access, the inter-visibility within those two giveaways needs to be maintained. So again, that will take out some of that parking. That parking's been there for at least 20 years from what we can see. The, the, and the arrangement at the junction of, with Elaby Lane has been there for a long time as well, but we're not sure quite what, what was the thinking at the time, but it definitely needs to be resolved because it is an issue and sort of the pedestrian route along there as well. So, we're, we're just in liaison with different colleagues in different parts of highways about what we think the solution needs to be, if that helps.
Do you want me to bring the agent or you're okay with that? He's already here. Okay. Oh, no, no, then, unless if you have a question for the agent, I mean, specific question, then I can invite him to come along. Can you please come to the table, please sir? It's sort of, we're, we're getting used to it as well, it's a new equipment we've got.
Hopefully you can all hear me. Can I just have clarity about exactly what you want me to respond to? I've written all your questions down and I could take one each turn, but obviously I note that the case officer's already answered a number of them, so.
Yeah, I guess the key one is around PE provision and how the school will function without the play areas, the playing fields that they're losing.
Okay, thank you. So I'll give a sense of where we've got to with this. So as the case officer rightly pointed out, we've done an appraisal of the site, obviously the existing school buildings are dated and obviously we've submitted a conditions report which sets out the issues there. Essentially, there's no viable option to improve those as they are, they're in poor condition. And that's then led to the options appraisal that's already been touched on. That's obviously then resulted in our site being selected, which then obviously impinges on an existing informal area. So just taking the northern element that's currently designated for green space, what we do there is we go up towards where the current tree line is. And there's quite a big topographical change from the centre of the site where that building's proposed to the actual usable playing field to the north. So, you know, I'm not disputing that it's currently green space, I'm not disputing, you know, anything around that, I'm, I'm just simply saying in terms of usable area that the school or the community would use for, you know, a level of sport, whether that's formal or informal, there's not really a loss there. Where the, the loss, obviously, I think you're specifically talking about is to the south. So that area, we would suggest, and Sport England may disagree, just to be open about it, I was actually a planning manager at Sport England for over eight years, so I understand the issues very well. They are considering it playing field because they're looking at the overall units, so the, the formal playing pitches to the north and east as well as that. But if you take that section in isolation, it doesn't actually measure 0.2 hectares, sorry, it doesn't, hasn't had a pitch on it of 0.2 hectares that's been delineated. So in isolation, it wouldn't form playing field. As part of the wider piece, it has been considered playing field by Sport England. It's only ever been used for some rounders, some informal football, as far as we're aware in terms of being goals, but not, you know, official markings. And essentially what the school are looking to do is re-provide, try not to suggest that double counting's occurring, but essentially the new area, which is being put on the existing car parking area, provides a level of amenity space, if you like, for informal play. That is ultimately replacing the, the green open space to be lost. But in terms of the function, it's actually partly replacing the area of what Sport England have constituted playing field. So, that area, what I should also say in functional terms, that area where the car parking is currently is quite close to the school building. So when the kids come out of the main, the older building, that's the existing building, they can go on to that area and it's quite close to the building, whereas the space we're talking about being lost is a little bit further away from that. I think also, a key, there's a lot of benefits, but I know I'm coming away from your question a little bit, but one of the key benefits is you go to the site at the moment and it feels strange in terms of, you go into the site and you're just met by basically a road and at the times when cars are moving, you know, whenever that is, you've got a school with children totally dissected by a road, an access road to the car park. So one of the key benefits is taking that away entirely. Yes, at the very start, there is potentially a small amount of car parking, but you're segregating the site, so you've got, you know, the kids and the school buildings in one part of the site and then in a separate part of the site, you've got the, the, the car parking. So to come back to your question, the school are comfortable that that provides that level of provision, it is relatively informal. The, the formal side of it is totally retained in terms of the existing pitch, both immediately within the school site and then the one, the area to the east which could be used for pitch provision. So, hopefully that answers the question. I think more generally, if, if you don't mind me just saying, I think the, the fundamental position here is that we've got an aging school building and, you know, the DFE are obviously looking to fund this and bring, you know, good, you know, high level of investment into, into Leeds in this school provision and provide a really neat bespoke, modern school building with all the facilities that children would expect and, you know, aspire to really, because it will be really good provision. And also, it's a really high standard of, in terms of sustainability, so it includes whole plethora of sustainability features, which is how in the planning statement to just give a kind of broader sense of it. I don't know if there's any specifics that I've not touched on.
Thank you. The other thing that I was going to ask you, but while you're here, I'll, I'll do it now, is there's a number of points in it where it says the school's not willing to enter any legal agreements. And I just wondered what the rationale was of not being willing to, to do that.
I can't answer that question. What I can say is certainly, you know, I'm obviously acting as agent on behalf of the construction company, I've worked on various schemes with them and the DFE and we're absolutely looking to do what's needed to make it a really good scheme. So there's no, that might infer that somebody's trying to evade doing something to the benefit of the scheme, I don't think it's a case of that. I think, well, I know it's not a case of that, maybe there's something about, sometimes the DAF to, DFE have to agree certain provisions separately because of the nature of the contract, but it's, in terms of doing the right things on this scheme and delivering what we need to deliver, that's absolutely our focus. I think the main sort of challenge about that loss of playing field is there's simply no space to replace it. And we have considered all options for that. There's also a bit of an impingement in terms of making sure we achieve the 10% biodiversity net gain and needing to retain existing trees on the site. So, there's only so many options to, to accommodate all these things. But yeah, in answer to your question, I don't think there's, there's certainly not a reason in terms of not doing the best for the scheme. And I don't think where there is a specific requirement, we do our best to obviously address that and provide what's needed.
Councillor Sharp and then councillor Firth.
Thanks Chair. I think actually councillor Bethall's asked, I had three questions, councillor Bethall's asked two of them in terms of the change of use of the school and parking. And I think the agent may have just answered my third one, which was around the actual sports field. Is it solely just used by the school, there's no local teams that use the sports field, you know, local football teams or anything?
I think, as I understand it, and there's the, and actually, if I can come back and want to answer Bethall's question, so I don't think I answered the question about the difference in policy terms between the protected green space and the playing pitch. So, this, the kind of northern section, which is the kind of protected, yeah, well, protected of allocated green space, I suppose to describe it as, this is laid out as play space and I don't know if there are any sort of local teams that use it, but certainly the community use agreement allows for that. And that's certainly something we would want to see retained. There is still that just slightly outstanding question about, you know, there is a new building going here, this field will be used potentially by third parties, so we just need to make sure that you kind of balls kicked in this area aren't going to damage the school building. So there's a bit of a question about where this kind of fencing goes and that, that will be resolved. So what we're also just trying to make sure is that this doesn't kind of limit the use of this for ball sports, for instance, by third parties. And then you've got the kind of playing pitch area down here. Now, in current policy terms, there isn't actually any difference because both are green space essentially under G. because both are green space essentially under G6s and therefore they are protected. There used to be a slight difference, which I won't go into in terms of the old policies. There's a protective playing pitch policy that's separate to the green space, but the last iteration of the CO strategy merged the two. So they're both retained basically as the same.
Counselor Firth.
Thank you Chair. Further to those questions, I have a couple of questions for the agent. The first one is in relation to the trees on the main street on Ellaby Road, Cavalier Hill. Just asking about the fact that, is there any other option if the continuing problems happen concerning the established trees that are on that banking? Is there another way of getting access to the car park, be it through the current entrance? Or is there a particular reason why you justify having a new entrance built opposite the church? And then the second question is, could you give us a bit more details on what actually the delivery, construction of this site would be if you were granted permission? How long would that green space obviously be taken out of use and then not replaced until the next car park, sorry, the current car park is then grassed over? And obviously it takes some time to establish itself. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I think ultimately on the tree point, and just to be really clear about that, I think the main trees that lie on Ellaby Road are due to be retained. I understand, I'd want to, you know, just double check this and we could obviously feedback following this meeting, that the only one to be removed in the row along Ellaby Road that was shown is due to the health of the tree as opposed to the need to remove it. Where there are trees to be removed, there are a couple to the centre of the site where the building's proposed and then the more down the side of the car parking alongside the existing sports hall. So in terms of the tree length along Ellaby Road, that is predominantly due to be retained other than where there's a sick tree essentially. So hopefully that gives a sense of that. As I say, in terms of that, the approach generally is to ensure as much retention as purely possible on these sites and I've worked on a few. So the first principle is to try and make sure there is no impact. Obviously in this case, we've only got certain parameters to work within. But through the landscape scheme, we're obviously making sure we're hitting the 10%. So not only is the biodiversity on the site going to be retained overall, but it's also going to be improved. So obviously there is proposed tree planting through the site, you can just about see it on that plan. And then obviously where the existing school building is, there's obviously proposed green space in that area as well, which obviously helps for tree planting purposes but also amenity. So that's my answer to the first one. In terms of the second one, I don't actually know where I'm phasing, so I'm not going to pretend I do. It's certainly something we can clarify. I think anything that's currently used fundamentally, you know, in terms of formal sport, obviously is due to be retained. And then where there's that, obviously that loss of the existing, let's call it amenity area rightly or wrongly, and the re-provision, we'd need to confirm around the phasing plans because I'd want to be accurate in my answer to that. Just one other thing that I didn't touch on before as well is that the existing building, which if you've ever been is quite an interesting one in terms of it's a nice old building, but there's quite a few additions and, you know, there's been quite a few amendments made to that building. Obviously proposing to replace part of the roof because the roof is shot and also looking at things like replacing the windows. Now, for my money, that's a huge improvement because if you look at parts of that building, you know, there's been funding pots available at different times and people have done the best. But some of the work that's been done is, in places, this is not technical, it's just my view, is quite poor. So there's a few of the windows that could be really nice and very, very crude in quality. So what will be put back in a number of cases will be a lot better. And obviously where there's a roof that's essentially had it, there'll be a modern provision made for that. I know that's an add-on, so apologies.
Thank you. Counselor Bitl and then Counselor Ray.
Thank you. This is more for officers. In terms of the green space being less, I think, area-wise, new versus old, is there anything we can do to condition it so that its value as an amenity space is higher? So that the loss of space is compensated by there being informal play, rocks that can be sat on and benches and things that will help to improve the amenity value of what is then put in? In terms of the, and this is a question regarding the area of the building that's being removed, there's a lot of trees there which leads me to think, actually, will there be a lack of oversight? And I don't know whether it's a material planning consideration that we can look at the sort of, if we're planning on putting lots of trees in there, the potential for bullying and there to be young people trapped with issues, whether that's a material planning consideration or we just take it as read that the school will just engage with that. But because it's relevant to the trees being planted to cover the BNG, it feels like it could be relevant. And then finally, this is probably more for the Chair. I think what was highlighted in this report for me is the fact that the green space policy more holistically isn't any more fit for purpose in the sense of we have moved on safeguarding wise that schools can't have just open playing fields because the kids will abscond or there's a perceived danger of having kids just in open fields during lesson time. So schools are more holistically consistently fencing in their playing fields. I wonder if there's something that you can do Chair around, whether it's a national policy or a local policy, to stop us from having a green space inside the school's perimeter actually classed as public access green space because it effectively nowadays isn't and would be a safeguarding risk for it to be. So we kind of need to stop pretending as a planning authority or as a national planning authority that it is. So I wonder if you'd be able to take that forward for me. Thank you.
Okay, I mean, I think in terms of the, we can certainly condition the final design of the green space and look at that in terms of, as you say, what pieces of equipment are in it, how it can be used etcetera and the quality of that. That's certainly not an issue. In terms of the broader safeguarding issues, it would be my view that that wouldn't be a material planning consideration, that we'd look to the school and you'd assume that that would be, because obviously the school would be involved in the design for the play space, that what eventually ended up on mine or a colleague's desk in terms of that conditioned discharge would have addressed matters such as that. But I think it's something we'd probably look to them to retain. In terms of the sort of enclosed POS at that top end, I think unfortunately in this scenario, it was public open space, which the school has then needed to use and has enclosed. So it isn't the case that it was school and that we allocated, it's kind of slightly come the other way around unfortunately. But yes, I entirely take the point about pitches being enclosed, that's not generally of a concern. I think actually one thing I should have mentioned earlier within the presentation is the description of the application doesn't account for the change of use. Whereas actually the land around the building, its use will be changing from public open space to an education use. So we'll be looking just to wrap that up in the description change as well, which in some ways might slightly address some of the concerns you have in terms of that.
On the same point, before I can respond to Counselor Bitl's point. Yeah, yeah.
I didn't know about the situation about fencing in football pitches, but it's a shame to hear that, to say the least. But I don't know the policy. I wanted to ask, in terms of the council then, what the policy is in terms of ratio about losing this sort of land compared to, of what it would, in terms of the impact that it will have and how that would impact on policy more generally because of the fact that when it comes to having this availability of this land for use anyway.
Sorry, if I understand the question, I think the policy basically seeks to prevent development on green space. That's where it basically starts, which is no. And then there's a series of unlesses. One of the unlesses is replacement provision. Another of the unlesses would be about improving the kind of usability of sort of adjacent green space. So the policy doesn't accept any loss as a principle. And this is part of the reason why we're bringing it to members and certainly as officers we couldn't make a decision on this because it's so contrary to such a key policy. Is whether or not members feel that the loss of that space is acceptable because there's going to be no uplift and no re-provision. That sort of more informal space to the bottom will be lost. Because the, in terms of, so this is the kind of informal adjacent next to the playing pitch space the agent's been talking about and that kind of becomes, the staff car park becomes the replacement. So this and this sort of switch essentially, it's this that goes and doesn't come back at all. And that is a loss which we just need to weigh against the benefits of the application. Does that answer the question? Have I completely misunderstood what you're asking?
And is that pure virgin land that's never been built on?
My understanding of the site is, I think it used to be maybe, I actually don't know the answer. I've got vague recollection of seeing an old aerial that might have had it as hard standing related to some parking when this was being built. But that generally has been, the old sort of school boundary, that sort of white line there was the old school boundary. So this land has certainly been enclosed in the school, has never been built on for a school building. It's certainly been kind of spaced in the school, but it may have had some hard standing at some point. But please don't quote me on that, I can certainly find out and come back to you with the detail.
Yeah, with regards to Counselor Bitl's point, I will raise it at a different forum locally and then obviously I'll wait for the advice and see how we can process this nationally. And I do understand what you're saying and there are concerns with the young people, so absolutely. If there aren't any other questions, shall we, Counselor Jenkins? And then Counselor Ray's. Sorry, Counselor Ray was before you, David, sorry.
I may have missed it, but is there a recommended area per child or the school population for how much green space there should be and how much will it be diminished by this? And the second one is a bit of a curve ball, but is there no scope? Because when you look at that, there's not a lot of green space other than the playing pitch, which tends to have a limited amount of people playing. I mean, you don't have 100 children playing football on the playing pitch, do you? So what is left is actually quite minuscule. Is there no way of incorporating the parking somewhere underneath the building?
Sorry, I'm having a blank moment. What, your first question, sorry, that's completely gone out of my head.
It's just about, if you were building the school from scratch, what would the ratios be and whatever now?
Must admit, that I don't know because that would be a Department for Education and schools matter. Our sort of green space ratios are very different and they're based on kind of population within award figures and they're all set out in G3 of our CO strategy. So there will be minimum ratios and one would assume that this proposal being followed by the school and the DFE accords with those because I wouldn't, I'd assume the DFE wouldn't be progressing something that was so contrary to its policies. And yes, we haven't explored alternative options with the applicants in terms of different ways. It's very much a case of the application presented as it is and we're bringing it here for kind of comments. But that's certainly one of the things that we can sort of put the question to them and come back if that's something that members would be keen for us to sort of explore. I think whether or not you could get sufficient parking underneath the building, I'd query. And I don't think the building's footprint is going to be the same size as the car park. So it may still need to be some additional provision. But yeah, certainly ask a question.
Counselor Jenkins.
Yes, my question is on page five really, it's about district heating. So it mentions a bit vaguely a pipework connection is planned. And I suspect that, does that mean that it's going to be connected to Leeds pipes? And the second point is the new building, well, it's flat roof. So, but is there a possibility of installing solar heating or getting some funding through Salix?
Is that to me? Yeah, in terms of Leeds pipes, I actually had a minor involvement in that back in the day when I was in a previous job. So it's great that obviously that's been considered. I understand that it is being connected, but we can provide confirmation, that's certainly what I understand. And it's as simple as that, which is great obviously. In terms of the sustainability measures, there's a whole host of sustainability measures going into the building as there are some of the other schemes that we've worked on. And solar panels is normally considered one of those. I'd need to look back at the exact provisions, but I think so. But I don't want to say something that's inaccurate. It's certainly fully fitted with sustainability measures to make sure the impact's as minimal as possible for carbon emissions.
Counselor Bromley.
Thank you Chair. Just to sort of strengthen really as well on top of what Counselor Ray has been saying that looking as well at their assessment for Thon and Tossen Richmond Hill, like the parks and gardens place has deficiency, outdoor sports allotments and the natural ground area. I just think it's striking, it's so significant for this area in particular to have accessible outdoor areas to as many young people as possible seems really significant. Actually, we should be strengthening this question of how we can make that more accommodating.
Sorry. Shall we move on? Any comments?
I think it's probably just worth clarifying as well, there's obviously been a couple of comments around the football pitch. Ultimately at the moment, the fencing and the operation of access is more about actually retaining the quality of the existing field because what the school have found, I understand, is if they just left it totally open, then they'd be finding on a Monday morning that there'd be glass bottles on it and things like that which would then hinder the school's use of that, but just hinder the use of it generally. So as I understand it, there's a, I don't know how formalized it is, but there is provisions for the gates to be open to allow local residents, for example, to use that space for amenity. And obviously if there is a distinctly secured community use, then obviously provisions have been made to allow that to happen as well. So it's basically a compromise to try and retain the integrity of the playing field for use as opposed to like shutting it off because the school don't want it to be used. So it's trying to get that balance.
Do members have any comments? Thank you sir. Can I now ask Jonathan to go through the questions and please summe up at the same time as well?
Yep, okay, thanks Chair. So we've had quite a lot of good and detailed questions around some of the issues that do arise as our questions to you as members regarding issues on parking, issues about loss of trees or location of new trees and their impacts, issues around the benefits to the community in terms of a re-provided school against the potential loss of pitch area and the implications of that. So I'll just run through those questions with members if that's okay. If you could give an indication on each one, either by a vote or full agreement if required. So the first of those, it's at the bottom of your report. What are members' views on the principle of the development taking place, including the loss of the playing pitch? If members want to express, I mean, we've heard various questions, but if members want to put forward opinions.
Counselor Bitl, sorry.
Yeah, for me it feels like a bit of a no-brainer. If the school building is going to break apart, it needs a new building. If that's the best location for it, it's about, for me, the principle of it, I'm in favour of. It's now about just conditioning it to get the best possible outcome because the building has to be built.
Thank you. Yeah, nods of agreement Chair, so I think we'll take that as the comment for that one. So the next question, are members content that the need for upgraded facilities amounts to a public benefit that is sufficient to outweigh... to a public benefit that is sufficient to outweigh the identified heritage harms, including the potential loss of significant frontage trees? So I think that's basically a yes or a no.
Counselor Jenkins?
I'd sort of wrote to the ward members and asked them, as I thought, so Counselor Farley replied to say that they thought one of us was going to be invited to a four-minute presentation, but he says, I believe our ask is that any outdoor facilities, e.g. sports pitches, are made available to the wider community outside of school times?
I just, I think we can understand certainly where the the benefit of it, but I also do think that the there is more work that can be done to retain more trees in that particular area. For example, all the trees that are next to the current building are to be removed even on the site itself. So it will become a pretty tree, what's the word? I can't even think of the word, but it will become a very flat area, which is currently at the moment very much wooded and or at least covered in trees.
Okay, thank you. So question three, are members content with the new access arrangements subject to the imposition of off-site highway controls?
Yeah.
Nods around the room, Chair. Yep. Okay, thank you. And then question four, do members consider the further information relating to landscape assets is required prior to the determination of the application? So you, yeah, you'd like further information on that? I think that was quite clear from the level of questioning and the comments. So that's a yes, thank you. And are there any other matters that members wish to raise at this point? I mean, obviously we've taken on board the questioning and the comments as well to inform our further discussions with the applicant. So unless there's anything else, that that is the questioning, Chair.
If you'd like, sum me up now, please.
Okay, thanks Chair. So yeah, we're having a good level of questioning to officers and to the agents, so thank you for the agents for attending today. It appears that members do accept the principle of the redevelopment, including the loss of the the playing field. There are some concerns around the use of the playing pitches and the availability for community use. And also perhaps we could look at the benefits again compared to the loss of the trees within the site and what provision there is to either retain trees or provide them in a different location for other reasons. Members are generally content with the access arrangements, subject to appropriate highway controls. Members consider that further information is required regarding the landscape assets at the site. And then there were no other issues raised at this point?
I think we're just looking at those off-site highway improvements at the junction as well, just to get the two-way carriageway in. Is that something that members were also keen to see? Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you Chair. I think that's that's about it for that one.
Thank you. Can we take the vote? Could I have a proposal in a second, please? Can someone propose this? Counselor Bromley, anyone to second? Counselor Ray, thank you. All in favour? Anyone against?
Sorry Chair, just to jump in, we're not really voting on anything, so it's just that Jonathan will take the comments.
I'm just reading my.
Jonathan will just take the comments forward.
Okay, let's move on. I've given my secret away. Right, can we now move on to item eight, Appeal Decision summary in relation to the Sungate Stables, Sungate Terrace, Kipex?
Thank you Chair.
Counselor Miller, I think wants to come in.
I just wanted to point out that the report and the agenda item both suggest that it's in Gartherton Swinton Ward, but that's not correct, it's in Kipex and Methley.
No, no, apologies Counselor, that's entirely my fault, hadn't noticed that. So yes, members, this is just bringing back a report following an appeal decision. I'm fairly certain a lot of members were on the panel at the time when the application was considered. So it's for a gypsy and traveller pitch, which is partially retrospective. Caravans have been moved on to the site, it's at the back of the site here. Some work still to do on the site. Officers brought the recommendation of approval with sort of very significant weight given to the personal circumstances. From my recollection of the panel decision, members didn't consider that the personal circumstances should be given quite as much weight as officers did. It's a very nuanced decision. It was then passed back for refusal. So there's a hearing held in December. The appeal decision was appended to the report. But the two sort of takeaways from this really are that the kind of protection of green space and the allotments was really given significant weight by the inspector. So sort of members' concerns and officer concerns around the loss of that allotment were very, very much supported. And I think that is very for a real positive to take forward that we are right to protect green space, particularly where green space is allocated in a local plan, inspectors will give that a lot of weight. But ultimately the inspector did consider that a temporary permission for three years to get the youngest child of the family through school outweighed the kind of temporary loss of the allotment. So it's not a permanent loss and I think the the appeal decision is very clear in saying permanent loss wouldn't be justified by personal circumstances. But it really is just a flag, inspectors will be giving a lot of weight to personal circumstances in these scenarios because of our lack of a five-year supply of gypsy and traveller sort of sites. And I think going forward, if we as officers are bringing recommendations of approval, I think one of the key benefits, if we can work towards approvals, is that we can then put quite a few conditions on and the kind of control remains within the council rather than being a very kind of ad hoc, pass up the planning inspector. Nobody's quite sure what's going to happen. So that might just be one sort of takeaway to bear in mind, you know, next time an application like this ends up a panel, as they often do.
Right, do members have any questions or comments? Counselor Miller?
Just on that point, were there any conditions that we were going to impose that now won't be imposed because of this?
No, there weren't. The, very much at the hearing, the inspector did question some of the conditions we were putting on because for instance, the inspector was quite concerned about us wanting a landscaping condition on a temporary permission. It's quite an imposition for an applicant to like install hedges, get them established for them to then be off the site maybe 18 months later. But the applicant was very, they they just wanted permission. They were very much willing to say, yeah, the council wants a condition, we'll accept that condition. My view is that had we not had an applicant that was quite so willing to accept conditions, there might have been a bit more pushback from the inspector. But so no, we're fine on conditions on this one, thankfully.
Counselor Jenkins?
Yeah, I think we should welcome this decision really in retrospect because we're a child-friendly city and this is putting the child first.
Any other comments or questions? Could I ask members to note the outcome of appeal decision and the date and the time of the next meeting will be Thursday 27th of March 2025 at 1:30pm. This concludes meeting. I hope everyone enjoy the rest of the day.